Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome to the Tuesday, August 24th, 2010 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Kosakian, could we call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Mayor Protem Drayman.
Here. And our flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
I invite you to join me in renewing our pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This week, August 26th, has been designated Women’s Equality Day. The date was selected to commemorate the 1920 passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution granting women the right to vote. Let us pray for all the achievements we have witnessed as Americans since the passage of this landmark legislation. Let us remember the hard road that the founders of the women’s rights movement undertook, starting with their first rights convention in New York in 1848. We pray that their struggle will help us witness and speak out against other instances of oppression. We pray that their struggle will continue to inspire those who live in the shadow of inequality here and abroad. We recommit ourselves to this in word and deed here in our city as we deliberate the issues before us. Amen.
Mr. Kosakian, could we hear your report, please?
Certainly. The agenda for the August 24th, 2010 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, August 19, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. And our next item?
Next item is Presentation and Appointments. At 3:00 A. is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of August 31, 2010.
And with that, we’ll go to John Tuktoian.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Next week’s meetings will start with the Glendale Housing Authority at 2:30. There is one item under 6A is a Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding discussion of development of an affordable housing project for authority-owned property located Fifth Street and Sonora. The Glendale Redevelopment Agency has one business agenda item. At 6A is a Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding professional services agreement, change orders in connection with various projects in central Glendale and San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment project areas. And during the Glendale City Council meetings, there are a number of consent items. At 5B is a City Auditor regarding annual report of the City of Glendale Audit Committee. At 5C is a Chief of Police regarding authorizing the Glendale Police Department to spend grant funds awarded by the County of Los Angeles Real Estate Fraud Prosecution Program. And at 5D is a Director of Community Services and Parks regarding proposed park development project at 812 South Maryland Avenue. Under 7A, Adoption of Ordinances, is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of city-owned real property to Los Angeles SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless and granting a one-time exemption from ordinance number 5692. And finally, under Action Items, there are three. At 8A is a Chief of Police regarding inmate telephone service and management agreement. At 8B is a Director of Human Resources regarding resolution of the City of Glendale providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensations for employees of the City of Glendale. And at 8C is a General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding professional state strategic planning, legislative representation and advocacy, intergovernmental liaison and political analysis services.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Tuktoian. Our next item, please.
Next item at 3B is a Commendation to Kiwanis Club of Glendale for funding and building the garden beds of the Monterey Road Eco-Community Garden West.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sam Engel is here from Neighborhood Services.
And, Mr. Mayor Protem, if I can also read the next item?
Absolutely. Yeah, both A.
This is a commendation to Mr. Don Biggs for his leadership in organizing and building the garden beds of the Monterey Road Eco-Community Garden West. Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor Protem Drayman, members of the City Council, before we get started, I would like to invite my friends from the Glendale Kiwanis Club to join me up here tonight. With these people behind me, we have a little bit of a story to tell. In March of 2010, the Kiwanis Club of Glendale approached Neighborhood Services in search of a meaningful service project for their participation in the national Kiwanis event called One Day at Service. The recent success of the Monterey Road Garden, which is now known as Monterey East, and the length of the waiting time for those who are interested in gaining future gardening opportunities made plans to establish another community garden, a perfect fit for the Kiwanis mission of this active club in town. The vacant lot at 827 Monterey Road was chosen as a new and very feasible garden site. You can see photo boards here that were displayed by our Kiwanis Club here, and you can take a look at them if you didn’t see them before the meeting. As we met and worked out what should happen to make that plot of land into something a little more spectacular, the Kiwanis Club agreed to provide for the basic expenses of constructing the garden, that is, purchasing all of the lumber needed for the 18 raised garden beds, two of which, I’ll point out, are compliant for persons with disabilities, along with a tool shed, and the volunteer person power to build the garden beds. And I say “person power” rather than the other term because we had a very diverse group of people that were out there representing all kinds of parts of our community. On May 22nd, coinciding with Glendale’s Great American Cleanup Day, the first day of the garden build took place. Some 40 members of the club were joined by volunteers from the Boy Scouts of America and Southern California Edison in an effort to build a garden in a day. Most of the work got done, including the basic construction of the tool shed and the construction of most of the raised garden beds on that day. A follow-up workday on June 19th saw the completion of all the internal improvements, including the pleasant task, and I use this euphemistically, of filling those 18 beds with some 50 cubic yards of what I will call compost.
It’s what we call it here, too, Sam.
Every Tuesday. Through the vision of the Kiwanis Club, a vacant lot which has been an eyesore in the community was transformed into a community gardening space, which will blossom this fall with winter vegetables planted by local residents. The mighty Kiwanians did not build a garden in a day as they set out to do, but they did do it in two, setting in place a model that we think can be replicated as future sites are identified and resources are allocated for community gardens throughout the community. Let’s take a moment and look at a short video presentation from our friends at GTV6 that shows very briefly the garden build and all of our Kiwanis men and women at work. So take a look at that while we keep going. I will point out that our Neighborhood Services staff is currently working with Glendale Water and Power and our Public Works Department to work out the logistics of hooking up the recycled water connection once a plan is approved by Los Angeles County Health, which is a complicated process. Once that water connection is made, 18 different families will look forward to growing their own crops at the new site. I’d like to point out, as we look at these things and some of the great things that happened, that this would not have been possible without the help of our Kiwanis Club, led by their president this year, Kathy Keen, and the leadership and coordination provided by their garden project leader, which shows how effectively Kathy can delegate, Don Biggs. Please join me tonight in recognizing their efforts, Mayor and City Council.
Kathy, would you please say a few words? And we have two mayors’ commendations here for you, which I’ll read and I’ll ask Councilmember Friedman to actually present, but we’d love to hear from you first, so...
Thank you, Mayor Protem Drayman and Councilmembers. It was really our pleasure to do this project. I don’t know when I have been so proud of any project that we’ve undertaken. Every time I drive by Monterey West, I just about pop my buttons, and I think of all the families that we’ve made happy and all the vegetables that will be grown and the beautiful flowers, and it’s just, it makes us happy, so it really was our pleasure. I’d like to introduce some of my cohorts, and I’ll start with Arti Kosakian, our city clerk, who was out there digging with the rest of us, Susie Dell, our vice president, and Joe Mandoki, who really, really labored on this, my husband Bob Keen, who was the foreman of the shed building committee, and that was his own little cult, and Marco Swan, who was also in on the shed building, and Don Biggs, and, oh yes, and Marco was the cook, too. He served everybody. And Leon Mayer is here tonight, too. But I do want to say that it was a community effort. It wasn’t just the Kiwanians. And I have to say that I really enjoyed getting to know Sam Engel, who worked right alongside us and made all of this happen, and Jake Senweb and Juan Rodriguez back there. Everybody was just awesome. Loved having the Boy Scouts there. It was just, it was a great day, great two days.
Thank you very much. And let me take this moment and I’ll read this commendation from Mayor Najarian into the record, and then if Councilmember Friedman presented. It’s presented to, it’s Mayor’s Commendation, “Presented to the Kiwanis Club of Glendale in recognition of your outstanding community service in funding and building the garden beds of the Monterey Road Eco-Community Garden West. It is this kind of generosity and community spirit that make Glendale a great place to live and to work.” And isn’t that the truth? And it’s signed by Arnajarian, Mayor, August 24th, 2010.
Thank you.
And let me also ask Don Biggs to step forward. That’s actually our-
He should.
-our next item. Can we roll into? It’s been right into the record, so, Don, you’re official, but let me... Don, this is also a Mayor’s Commendation, presented to you, Don Biggs, in recognition of your leadership and outstanding community service in organizing and building the garden beds of the Monterey Road Eco-Community Garden West. It is this kind of generosity and community spirit that make Glendale a great place to live and work, and that is signed by Mayor Arnajarian. And I want to, while Councilmember Friedman is headed down there, I couldn’t make your opening day, but I sure made, and I know Councilmember Friedman was there, but I made your follow-up day on June 19th, and I saw the shed building contingent in full swing. I saw Mr. Mandoki crawling around in the dirt and kicking those bins into place, and wheelbarrows almost knocking me over, and your vice president saying, “Hey, if you’re not here to work, buzz off.” So, but it was terrific. And this is really the kind of community building and neighborhood building that is so important to our city, and it makes me very proud that an organization like Kiwanis Club stepped forward to do what they always do, which is really partake in making Glendale a wonderful place, as the mayor says, to live and work. So thank you so much. And I know you were there, Laura, on the opening day of the work, so...
Well, I was mostly connected to this garden by marriage, as you know, but it was amazing to go out and see the hard work that everyone put in, and not just the grownups, but there were kids out there who worked even harder, I think, than the adults. But the Kiwanis and Don have really given the community a great gift. It truly is. And to see all of, all the representatives of the community out there working on this, it’s really, it truly is showing what makes Glendale so wonderful. So thank you all, and pretty soon we’ll be seeing the flowers and the vegetables, and we look forward to the next project, so congratulations. And thank you. Thanks so much. Congratulations.
Don? Thank you all. Councilmember Quintero?
Yeah, I was also there on opening day, and let me assure the people out in the audience that it was an incredibly hot day. It was not without one bit of shade, but they worked very, very hard. They actually were protecting a bird’s nest-
That’s right.
...the entire time. Hopefully, the bird made it through the, they’re shaking their heads, so hopefully it made it through. And then I just want to say thank you to Don Biggs. He is a retired Glendale Fire Chief and who continues after his retirement to work as hard as ever, and it’s my pleasure always to talk to Don and to work with him. He’s just a very hard-working man, also a veteran that served on the committee with me on the Vietnam Wall, or on the Veterans Walls, I should say. But thank you very much, Don, for everything you do.
Thank you all. Okay. Let me also just take this moment to explain to the public why I’m here, while I’m always here on Tuesdays, but why I’m here running the meeting. Our mayor, Mayor Najarian, is in Korea at the moment, representing the City of Glendale. Not at the city’s expense, I would point out, he is here, he is there with our sister city group in Korea, in Gyeosung, and so I don’t know, I doubt he’s watching by computer tonight, but if you are, hello, Mayor, and we will turn the dais back over to you upon your return.
We do have his phone number.
And we do have his phone number, which we will circulate to the public during the course of the meeting. Mr. Kosakian, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Mr. Weaver?
I got a couple for one time, which I usually don’t do. One is, last Thursday, the mayor and I attended an event up in Kenneth Village at Pet Rush Grooming. It was unique, and it was so different that Channel 5 and Channel 11 both came out and covered it, and Best Friends Animal Society, a nonprofit company, also videotaped, and I asked where is this going to be shown? They said, probably all across the United States. What they were doing, or what Renee, who owns the place, is doing, he’s always had animals in his front windows, and generally, they’ve been from breeders. And what he is now doing is he’s going to the animal shelters in Lancaster and Riverside and picking up animals that might otherwise be put to sleep and bringing them down and putting them in his window for adoption. It’s something they hope catches on across the nation. Renee’s place is one of the very few in the region that does it. I think he said Santa Monica does, too. And he doesn’t make any money on it. He makes the money on hoping you’ll come back and let him do the grooming of the animals. Used, I think, to be a surgical tech, and he got out of that, and now he grooms animals with great care. So that was a, they had about 300 people there for the event, so it was quite unusual. Another one, because it gets me, we have these catflies that come in here, and every week, they throw numbers and facts, where they call facts out there and expect you to believe everything. The staff usually get surprised because we see numbers and statements that we’re not prepared to refute because we don’t know where they came from. Anybody can throw numbers out, but then, when they do, then somebody else says, “Well, he said.” Pretty soon, it starts going around town. And a couple of weeks ago, Mike Mulhill said that Barry Allen is the one that got the Bell issue going. Well, I’ve read all the articles I can find on the Internet, and the LA Times got out there because of Maywood giving up all their police force, firing everybody, and Bell taking over. That was the genesis of the investigation. Barry Allen had nothing to do with it. And then last week, he got up and said, “I’ve just been, recently been convicted of corruption.” Now, if you know anything about corruption, if I was convicted of corruption, I couldn’t be sitting here. I’d probably be in jail. And it was five years ago, and it was simply, I was trying to do my own accounting, I should have hired a CPA. I ended up paying a fine for it, and I hired a CPA. I wish, that was a silver lining. I wish I’d known at the time. But he just gets up and states, “As a matter of fact, I’ve been convicted of corruption.” And the last item, because there’s another article today, and I’ve said it, this will be the third time, on the water rate hikes, saying that, “Oh, we probably are doing the water rate hikes to take care of the bloated pensions of city workers. Everything comes back to the pensions.” I’ll try to explain it one more time. I did more research and more questions. The Metropolitan Water District said we had to cut our acreage feet of water by 10%. If we did not, they would fine us. So the last piece of the puzzle, what I checked today, how much would that fine have been? Almost $4 million. So, if we had not cut the rate, we would have been charged $4 million. That’s the $4 million that, another issue, whether you could transfer to the general fund, legal staff is working on that. But the point is, the $4 million, whether it was transferred to the general fund or kept in Water and Power, would have disappeared with no rate hike without cutting down on the usage of water. So you’ve got to net it out zero. We do have to maintain the water system, unlike the City of Los Angeles. We do replace the pipes and upgrade the systems, and our expenses continue to increase. So I hope the gentleman is listening this time, and we had no choice, a $4 million fine. So we avoided that. That’s it for today. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Councilmember Friedman? Mr. Quintero? I have a couple of items. One is, Mr. Weaver, you beat me to it, but Renee Karpetian, who has Pet Rush, I could not attend, but I wish I was able to go, and I’m glad that you were there, Mr. Weaver. He does a great job, and he also works very hard as a multi-time president of the Kenneth Village Merchants Association. Very good, good man, does a lot of good work. I might also mention that the Glendale Humane Society, that is precisely what they do and have been doing for many, many years, they adopt from existing shelters that are shelters that euthanize animals. Glendale Humane is one of the only no-kill shelters in the entire region, and that is what they do. And you very often see their Second Chance page in the Glendale news press, where people can see the animals that are there. Not only can they adopt them, but they can send money in to, to help support them at the same time. So anything that furthers the care of animals and finding what are called forever homes, that’s a very good thing, and we thank Renee for, for putting his money where his mouth is. I’d also like to take an opportunity to mention the upcoming Montrose Film Festival. It’s the first annual, I guess you’d say, and I see there are people in the audience here who’ll be probably talking about it during the, yeah, during the appetizer portion of Oral Communications, but I just wanted to mention it briefly, 27th and 28th of this month, that’s a Friday and Saturday, and you’ll get the details later, but I thought you might want to see a little piece of, of the, well, it’s an appetizer portion. Here’s a little piece of the pre-film film from 1947. This is the Montrose Rodeo Days from June 8th of 1947. Here is a piece of the parade. That’s Honolulu Avenue in 1947. This is the grand marshal arriving. It’s Jackie Cooper. The year before was Mickey Rooney.
Today, I saw an M up on the hill.
That is true.
It’s not there now, is it?
It’s not there now. These, this is the 2200 block of Honolulu Avenue, and you see the historic light poles that are there that went away and then the city brought back many years later. And you’ll see Elson Shoes, which is today a paper rabbit, and you’ll even see Herb Elson in this footage. And later in the footage, you’ll see the annual actual live rodeo at Onondaga Ranch, which is today what we consider one of our well-established residential neighborhoods over in Oakmont Woods, but it was at one time a working ranch, and you’ll see footage of those actual rodeo. Quite the affair. This was the year, the last year they did this, before the ranch went away. So, thank you, Mr. Kosakian, for showing that little snippet for us, and I just wanted to mention that the two films being shown are My Wild Irish Rose, starring Dennis Morgan, who was one of the benefactors of the town and the Crisina Valley, and his family will be there. And on the second night, they’ll be showing a John Wayne film on the second night, and there’ll be all sorts of entertainment that you’re going to hear about in just a minute, but I just wanted to highlight it a bit. All right. Is there any staff comments? No. All right. Mr. Kosakian, our next item?
Mr. Mayor Protem, the next item on the agenda is Consent Item Including Minutes and Following a Routine May Be Acted Upon by One Motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
And I have no cards.
I’ll move the-
Mayor Protem, I’ll move the consent calendar at 5:00.
All right, Mr. Weaver.
Second?
We have a second. Mr. Kosakian, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Mayor Protem?
Yes. Our next item?
Next item would be Oral Communications.
All right. And this is the euphemistically we call the appetizer portion of Oral Communications. This is for those who voluntarily limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making announcements related to items of public, broad public interest. Our first card is Colin Bogart, and followed by Steve Pierce and Tony Smith. Mr. Bogart?
Mayor Protem Drayman, Councilmembers, City Staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I work for the LA County Bicycle Coalition, working on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project here in Glendale. And I’m here this evening to tell you about an event that we’re going to be holding next month and seeking assistance for that event. I have a slide that I would like to show to you, as well as to the viewers at home. Once again, we are going to be conducting a Glendale Bike and Pedestrian Count, bicyclist and pedestrian count, Bike-Pedestrian Count 2010. We’re going to be needing volunteers to help us with this count. We will be counting at about 26 different locations citywide, and we’ll need roughly about 80 to 90 volunteers for this effort. We’re doing all the same locations as last year, the same days of the week, same time of day, and roughly same time of year. The purpose of this count is to build a database of information to track bicycling and walking trends in Glendale over the coming years. This year, of course, will give us an opportunity to compare the results from last year’s count and make informed decisions for the future based on that comparison. We also intend to share the information that we gain from this count with the upcoming BikeWay Master Plan update that Traffic and Transportation is going to be conducting. So, we are, of course, looking for volunteers, and if you or anybody in the public can help us with this effort, we would greatly appreciate it. And to volunteer, people can contact me, Colin Bogart, either via email at colin@la-bike.org or at 818-334-9731, or they could also go to the Safe and Healthy Streets website, which is la-bike.org/Glendale, and there’s a button that they can now click on the website, and it’ll take them to a site called volunteerspot.com, where they can pick the date, time, and location of their choosing. So once again, la-bike.org/Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bogart. Thank you for all you do. Next speaker is Steve Pierce and Tony Smith, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Drayman and City Council and Staff. My name is Steve Pierce and my friend Tony Smith, and we’re the two guys in the audience with details on the Montrose Film Festival. Back in February, Tony approached me. He’s a member of my coffee group that we meet at the Black Cow in Montrose every Wednesday, and Tony approached me and said that he had an idea. We normally show the Dennis Morgan Film Festival up at Two-Strike Park, and that’s always been a part of the CB Historical Society and also the CB Town Council, and his idea was to bring it to Montrose. And as you may remember, as John Will remembers, the theater that was in Montrose burned down, and it is now a parking lot. It happens to be the parking lot for Anderson’s Pet Store. And I know Councilmember Drayman has always had a dream to bring the movies back to Montrose, and through his efforts, we’re now doing it. And I want to thank Councilmember Drayman for those efforts, and Tony and I are sort of the co-producers of this, along with Mike Lawler of the Historical Society. This Friday and Saturday, we’re going to have a Montrose Film Festival. It’s going to be the first annual Montrose Film Festival. It’s sort of like the Sundance Film Festival, only Montrose-style, and it’s going to be something that’s going to be going on for years and years, and you’ll remember when we first started out on this. But Friday night, starting about 6:30 to 7 o’clock, the Maestro’s Band, which Tony is a part of, is going to do some jazz music and some good old time foot-stomping music. And then we’re going to have, Mr. Drayman is going to have his Montrose Shorts. I guess that’s the movie. We call it the Montrose Shorts, so we have to be careful what that is, but it’s going to be the, a little bit of the highlights of what you saw here. And then Friday night, we’re going to follow that with My Wild Irish Rose and the Dennis Morgan Movie. And then Saturday, we repeat the entire thing again, and then we’re going to have, Saturday night’s movie is going to be The High and the Mighty with John Wayne. So Tony, I’d like you to just say a few words, and this was sort of your idea, so let’s go for it.
Well, you’ve covered it, Steve, pretty well. I am looking forward to the John Drayman Shorts. That is going to, that is going to be a great little piece to add on to our, on to our show. We’re also going to have cartoons, and we’re going to have free popcorn. And the Dennis Morgan Movie is interesting because the last scene of the movie- And the Dennis Morgan movie is interesting because the last scene of the movie, he sings to a lovely young lady who turns out to be his daughter. And we're going to have, probably not the daughter, but several members of the family in the audience whom we will introduce, and I think you will find it to be a moving moment. And of course, you already heard from Councilman Drayman that the Dennis Morgan was a major figure in the area as far as providing leadership for the Montrose Christmas Parade and the Two Strike Park. So we encourage you to join us if you can, and certainly anyone who's watching this tonight. And then the second movie is going to be a Glendale native, John Wayne, Marion Mitchell Morrison, who will be in The High and the Mighty. And that movie garnered, I think, four Oscar nominations and won one. So it's a good show. It's also family entertainment in both nights. And in both nights, we'll have a cartoon as well as the Montrose Short. So I think it's going to be fun for all, and it'll give everybody a chance to patronize the Montrose Restaurants and gather downtown for a change. So thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
And tell them what time?
Time, thank you. 6:30, the Maestros will begin playing, and we'll play till sundown when we start the movie. We've got probably somewhere around an hour to an hour and a quarter. It's a 12-member band, and the Maestros are a fraternity of musicians headquartered in Pasadena, been around for 70 years, probably the oldest musical organization in the overall San Gabriel Valley area. So they are prepared to give us a lovely evening of song and typical music of that times. So 6:30.
So bring a folding chair and a box dinner if you like.
Location again?
Location is the 2200 block. It's the parking lot for Anderson's Pet Shop, which is at 2218 Honolulu Avenue. And this is right next door in what used to be the Montrose Theater. It's now a parking lot. And there'll be some free popcorn for all attending, and some good films and some nice evening for the family. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor, Acting Mayor Drayman, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the friends at the Glendale Public Library. And indirectly, I'm going to announce an event that we're having September 22nd. That's a Wednesday at 7 o'clock at the library. And this is indirectly honoring another famous actor, Bob Hope, who visited Glendale in 1946, was honored for his visit there. And his, one of his gag writers, Bob Mills, who lives in Toluca Lake and who's familiar with Glendale and Toluca Lake and Burbank, he is going to talk about his book. The name of his book is, the title is The Laughmakers: The Behind-Scenes Tribute to Bob Hope's Incredible Gag Writers. It's going to be a great program. Bob Mills, for 17 years, was a gag writer for Bob Hope. And in addition to, there you go, in addition to what he's going to talk about, we're going to specially honor Bob Hope that night because the library has issued library cards specially for Bob Hope's visit to Glendale in 1946. So all you have to do is come there, turn in your old library card, and you'll get a Bob Hope library card. And if you haven't joined the library, this will be a way to join the library by just taking out a card at the library. We welcome anybody who wants to read and write and do intellectual things at the library. Now, incidentally, Bob Mills is going to appear on Larry Zarian's program on September 9th. That's at 7 o'clock, Channel 380. And he'll be interviewed by Larry on that night. So we're looking forward to a great event featuring Bob Hope's gag writers on the 22nd of September, Wednesday. Parking is free, validated there at the library, and of course, admission is free to all these events. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Mr. Kasakian, our next item?
Mr. Mayor Protam, our next item under Action Items 8A is something unique, actually. Director of Public Works regarding public sale of surplus city-owned property at 1338 North Jackson Street through a public auction. 8A1 is a motion accepting bid and authorizing city attorney to open escrow.
Mr. Kasakian, I want to make an apology to you right now. I thank you for reading that into the record. However, I do want to take a couple of things out of order here if I might. I'm sorry, I'm just sitting. Let's take item 8C next. I'm sorry. Could you read item 8C?
Certainly. 8C is City Manager regarding request from Path Achieved Glendale seeking $5,000 cosponsorship from the city for the Second Annual Signature Fundraiser Event Casino Americana. At C1 is motion cosponsoring a $5,000 table.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, are we going to—
Yes, we'll go to the young lady coming to the dais.
Zazette Mullins.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protam, Drayman, council members, staff received the request to cosponsor the Second Annual Path Achieved Glendale event, which is their primary source of fundraising for the center. We have, in the past, last year, we sponsored them with $5,000. I also want to bring to your attention that in addition to the requests they're making from the city, they're also asked for $5,000 from GWP and $1,500 from Redevelopment Agency. The center, I know we have a couple of members on the board that would like to speak with you tonight about the event, but the event will be held on September 10th at the Americana on brand, and they're expecting to raise about $220,000 this year to help them go through placing individuals that need help for different housing. So if you would allow me, or if you want to call in on the speakers?
Yes, thank you. I have two speakers that have turned in cards, Rodney Khan and Nick Lamb, and I can call you both together or separately, as you wish. Mr. Lamb?
Mayor Protam and member of the city council. My name is Nick Lamb, and I appeared in front of you tonight to speak on behalf of Path Achieved Glendale. Tonight, I'd like to ask the city council again to be the cosponsor of our second signature event to raise money for the poor and needy, homeless individual and family and children in the greater Glendale area. Every time I appear in front of you, I'm always like, I'm actually proud, and always I would say that I'm proud to be associated with Path Achieved Glendale, which is truly a public-private partnership. You know, we put in our effort, we put in our fund, the city stepped up, and together we try to make life better for a lot of the needy individual in the city of Glendale. Here, we are asking you to do basically the same thing like you have done last year, which is be the cosponsor of this event. We see you as a partner. We work hand-in-hand with the city of Glendale. We want this event to be known as an event sponsored by Path Achieved Glendale and also the city of Glendale. And I am, every time I approach people for sponsor money, I'm always mindful of the fact that we are in a pretty bad economy right now, and I'm cognizant of the fact that you ask people for money is always sensitive. I, you know, I, however, I do want to point out that, you know, no matter how we think about the situation, we are still the lucky one. We don't need to worry about where we stay tonight, whether we've got food to eat tonight, whether our kids have a place to sleep tonight. We are sad, at least in that area. But there are people in this community who has to worry about that every night. And this is what we try to do to help those guys, at least do our share to try to make life a little easier for them to bear. And I'm asking the city council to do a $5,000 table sponsorship. We are very happy that the Glendale Redevelopment Agency had already committed to do a $5,000 sponsorship. And, not the redevelopment, the redevelopment is a $1,500 sponsorship, and the Department of Water and Power has committed to do a $5,000 sponsorship. We are pushing, we are arriving, closing up about 40 table sponsors right now, ranging from $15,000 to $1,500 per table. And again, Pacific BMW, together with the SHO Foundation, we try to do our best. Each year, we are donating $125,000 to this cause, and we hope to raise another $100,000, $120,000. And I'm making the request in front of you tonight, and we hope that you can give us a hand, as the economy is really tough, many people experiencing homelessness in the first time of their life, and the request for services is quicker than ever, and it's much harder nowadays to get help. So I hope you can give me a hand, and together we can make life better for them. And I have Rodney Khan, a board member of Path Achieved Glendale, where he can tell you a little more about what you can, what other people in the community can help us. Rodney?
Thanks, Nick. Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. Once again, Rodney Khan, I'm a board member with Nick Lamb on Path Achieved Glendale. I want to point out something. As a board member, we spend a lot of time on this issue, homeless issue, but by far, by far, Nick Lamb spends the most amount of time. They also spend the most amount of energy, and Pacific BMW and David Ho put up a tremendous, tremendous amount of money for this issue that we're very proud of. It was a big year for us. We purchased the SHO Hope and Compassion Center, along with the city of Glendale. We're looking at permanent housing for people to transition from the shelter into. We expanded our board. We also stabilized our finances. So from our perspective, it's been an outstanding year, even with this economy. This signature event that is taking place September 10th at the Americana, actually, we are looking at this event to raise money, as Nick pointed out, but it's not just to raise the money, it's to raise awareness of homelessness in the city of Glendale. And actually, we're moving towards a goal of hoping to end that at some point in the near future. We think this event puts our name out there, this event raises funds that we need, and this event is very crucial to our organization. So I'll reinforce what Mr. Lamb said, and we hope that you will join us as a cosponsor of this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. That is the item at 8C. I have no other cards. Mr. Quintero?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Lamb, Mr. Khan, the board, for all of the hard work and achievements. That's project achieve, and boy, are you achieving in light of the horrible economic situation we're in. You're doing a wonderful job. The new building that you're putting together is just going to be a godsend for many families. So I'm certainly on board. I'm sure the rest of the council is also, and I'll make the motion after whatever other comments are there.
All right. Well, I'm going to see if there are any other comments first.
I'll second.
Well, not to belabor it, but this is a true public-private partnership, and it's taking care of the most vulnerable members of our community. So I also want to just thank Mr. Lamb and the board, and Mr. Khan, for the work that they've done. And I don't think I'll be able to make the 10th, unfortunately, but I know you're going to have a wonderful and successful event.
Mr. Weaver, any other comments before the motion? Okay. For my part, Mr. Lamb, thank you so much for the work you have done, and thank you for the work you continue to do. But also, thank you for helping to educate those of us here on the dais by inviting us in during the year to assist in serving lunches at events and allowing us, as elected city officials, to participate in making Glendale a better place. You contribute in all the significant ways, but people have no idea just to what extent and Mr. Khan points out of your time and your energy and your money to make this happen. We thank you very much. Absolutely. Mr. Quintero?
I'll move 8C1.
Motion, the second. Mr. Kasakian?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Najarian? Mayor Protam? Drayman?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item, can we go to the item at 8D?
8D is City Manager regarding request from the North Sarun Cultural Association seeking the city's cosponsorship of the 12th Annual Armenian Independence Day Festival. D1 is motion cosponsoring the festival.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll go back to Zazette Mullins.
Hello. Mayor Protam, Drayman, council members, we received a request from the North Sarun Culture Event, Culture Association to request a cosponsorship of the 12th Annual Festival that will be held on September 26th at Verdugo Park. This event is intended to celebrate the Republic of Armenia, Armenians' 19th Year Independence from the former Soviet Union. The event is going to consist of demonstration, arts and crafts, songs, traditional costumes and cultural background of the Armenian culture, cooking, demonstration, and dance performance. We have Mr. Gary Sinanian with us tonight. He wished to speak to council about the event, but I'd like to talk about, quickly about the fiscal impact. We are looking at $4,100 for cosponsorship. As you're aware, the city council sponsored a cosponsor, sorry, adopted a cosponsorship policy a while back, which will qualify the association for 50% of the cost that will be incurred by the city. And at this time, the cost that will be incurred by the city will be, from the police department, is approximately $3,200, and for the Verdugo Park rental and some staff time, it's approximately $4,900, which brings us to the $4,100 total that the association is seeking from the city council. If this time, if Mr. Sinanian is ready to speak, if you have any questions regarding the event.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Mullins. Mr. Sinanian? Thank you.
Mayor Protam, Drayman, city council, city staff, it's that time of year again that we come to talk about the Armenian festival. In 1999, when we first started this festival, who knew that 12 years later, it's going to be such a great event? And it's become such a great event because of a great city staff, a great city council, and the city councils in the past, and basically the police department, the parks department, all of us working together to make sure we have a great event. This truly is an event Glendalians look forward to. It's a wonderful event. Most of you have been there in the past. We ask that you continue us, continue in your support. Special thanks to Mr. Kasakian's office, him and his office. Special thanks to Zazette and Monique and Parks and Ross Ferris, everybody at the police department. You guys really make our event a wonderful event, and we hope you will continue in the support, and we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you very much. Were there any questions for Mr. Sinanian? Well, he's there. Okay. Thank you so much. This is the item at, that was my only speaker. This was the item at 8D. Yes.
Yeah, it has become a wonderful event. More and more people attend every year. I mean, for a while, I used to count heads. There's just too many to count. And it's just a real positive thing that everyone, from food, entertainment, everyone participates in it, and they do a good job. The ACA does a wonderful job of putting this together. There haven't been any issues of any sort, even though there are thousands of people there. It's well-regulated and run. So I'm ready to make the motion after the comments.
All right. Ms. Friedman, anything?
Yes, I had a wonderful time last year. I'm looking forward to the next event.
Likewise, I wasn't there last year, I was there the year before, which was my first visit, and it won't be my last. It was a lot of fun, and again, just a nice family day out in the park. It's terrific. Mr. Weaver? Very good.
I'll move 8D1.
Motion, the second. Mr. Kasakian?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian? Mayor Protam? Drayman?
Yes. Can we hear the item at 8B, like boy?
8E?
Be like boy.
E. 8B is Director of Human Resources regarding resolution of the city of Glendale, providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. B1 is Resolution for Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for GCEA and GCA Confidential Classifications. At B2 is Resolution for Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for GME and GMA Exempt Classifications. And at B3 is a Resolution— And at B3 is a Resolution for Establishment of Classification Titles and Compensation for Executives, Executive Classifications.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll turn to Matt Doyle in just a second to give you the report on the bulk of the matter before you hear, but let me touch quickly on the one aspect of this that has the most impact on my portion of the city operation, which is Management Services, and that is the part of the report related to the Assistant City Manager position and the Deputy City Manager position. You recall, happily, you appointed Yasmin Beers last week as a new Assistant City Manager. As part of that, there's an adjustment in the compensation level, actually a downward adjustment. We're repositioning the position to be equivalent with that of Chief Assistant City Attorney. That results in savings on an annual basis of about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. Second part of that is that Ms. Beers, being new to the position, comes in at a much lower level. Over time, will grow through the ranges, but that will take in the neighborhood of three years or so. So there's additional savings there of about thirty-nine thousand dollars. Lastly, this resolution also includes the elimination of the position she previously held, Deputy City Manager, and that'll result in an annual savings in the neighborhood of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, including benefits. All three of those, just on the adjustments in Management Services alone, will result in annual savings in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. So I want to point that out. We're anticipating being able to make ends meet with the staffing we have, and as a result, hopefully contribute to closing the budget gap in the upcoming year. With that, let me turn to Matt Doyle for the balance of the report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Starbird. And Mr. Mayor, members of council, what this is, is a classification and compensation resolution, and what we're doing is amending it to address what amounts to five new job classifications. That would be five new titles that are being included in this, in this resolution. We're also adjusting the salaries of two classifications within. As Mr. Starbird said, the adjustments are mostly in the area of saving money versus adding. And then there's, of course, the elimination of the Deputy City Manager Executive Classification. Again, as Mr. Starbird said, this is something that we do periodically, typically around very early in the budget year, to add any new classifications that come up as a rise between different departments that they have specific needs for new classifications or adjustments to existing ones. Again, we have five that are being added, two that are adjusted, and one being eliminated. If you'd like any further...
We might just note, Mr. Mayor and Matt, that of the five classification changes, there are actually two bodies that will be added. Those are the two positions in the police DNA lab. Those are grant-funded entirely, and frankly, will be grant-funded for a good number of years, given the level of federal funding we've received. The other one is a minor adjustment, slight increase in salary, annual salary, of one of those positions in the Finance Department, about eight thousand dollars. So when you take all of these positions together, there is still a considerable savings over the course of the year.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Friedman?
Not a question, just a comment. I want to thank staff for continuing to tighten the city's belt in this time of economic crisis. I think the motto of Glendale employees is going to be doing more with less, but they've shown that through their hard work and their capabilities, that we are able to absorb these sorts of downscaling of the city staff. So I appreciate the work that each and every city employee of the city of Glendale does, and I think our residents do as well. So thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
Just going to say, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand here, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand there. Pretty soon, it becomes real money. No, it's a step in the right direction. Obviously, we are tightening our belts, and this is just one more way to do it.
Mr. Weaver?
All I was going to add is the city council will observe the relationship of Mr. Starbird and Ms. Beers, if they can actually do what three did before, and we'll monitor it.
We've said goodbye to our families for the balance of the year, and we'll take up residence a year in City Hall.
All right. I have no speaker cards, so...
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'd like to move eight B, one, two, and three.
All right. We have a motion in a second on eight B, one, two, and three. Mr. Kasakian, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Mayor Protem Drayman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. And then, let's go now, Mr. Kasakian, to item, yes, eight E like Edward.
Eight E is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding wireless antenna lease agreement between the city of Glendale and Los Angeles SMSA Limited Partnership. DBA Horizon Wireless at E1 is a ordinance for introduction for the lease agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have both cards on this? No, we have not. Let me ask whether council requires a report on this?
No, not for that location.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chapchan. I will certainly entertain a motion.
I'll move eight E.
It's an ordinance for introduction. Someone wants to introduce...
I'll let it be the ordinance at eight E one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. All right. Motion has been introduced. The ordinance has been introduced. Let's go now to the long-awaited item eight A, which actually, Mr. Kasakian, you already read into the record, but if you wouldn't mind...
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Protem, and council, item eight A under Action Items is Director of Public Works regarding public sale of surplus city-owned property at thirteen thirty-eight North Jackson Street through a public auction. At eight A one is a motion-accepting bid and authorizing city attorney to open escrow.
Okay, it's auction time in Glendale, it would seem. Let me go then to Chris Sansoni.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Drayman, and members of council. Tonight, we have six qualified bidders for the purchase of the property at thirteen thirty-eight North Jackson Avenue. As you know, the property was damaged in a mudslide in 2005 during one of the most devastating rainstorm seasons that this city has seen in recent times. Subsequently, the city acquired this property in the wake of legal action because it was damaged by a mudslide early on in the storm. It is being sold as is, and potential bidders have been invited to inspect the property. That occurred on August 11, and information packets were made available from the Public Works Department. Contrary to some recent comments, this is not the beginning of a wholesale sell-off of city's assets. It's quite rare that the city would sell a property such as this, and the last time was approximately 20 years ago, when the city sold a plot of vacant land up on Rimcrest Drive. This property on Jackson Street is not needed by the city, and consequently, on July 20, the council declared it as surplus. And this auction is a rare opportunity to recoup some of the expenses the city incurred in defending that legal action. At the end of the auction, the highest bidder will be announced, and the city council will be asked to pass a motion by a four-fifth vote. And the code requires that after that occurs, the buyer will be required to submit the rest of the purchase price, less any broker's commissions, within five business days. That's required by code. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. I have one, since I've never had the opportunity of sitting in on one of these. Who plays auctioneer?
The auctioneer is played by your city clerk.
Mr. City Clerk, and you're going to do this without overalls, or?
No, no large hat.
No large hat.
I may borrow your gavel, with your permission.
I don't say anything.
All right.
Sit here and watch.
Okay, very good. Let me, while I've interrupted the proceedings, let me also ask that anyone that, slightly off-topic, just housekeeping, anyone that plans to speak at oral communications, they could please submit their cards now to city clerk, because we won't be accepting cards after that, so, okay?
Mr. Mayor, while you're taking any of the final cards, a question for Ms. Sansoni. Chris, you mentioned brokers' fees, if there are any. The successful bidder will be determined on what basis, though?
The successful bidder is determined on the net bid, that is, after the commission has been...
After any commissions it may have been committed to.
Has been subtracted, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
So it has nothing to do with who has the best costume, or any of that?
Not today.
All right. All right. That's the other, I think that's let's make a deal, I think. Okay. All right. Mr. Kasakian?
All righty.
Auctioneer Kasakian?
Thank you very much. Bear with me, this is the first time that I'm doing this, and I'm going to do it from the center of the room, reverse the podium, so no one in my peripheral vision who may be making a bid will go unnoticed.
Want the gavel?
Sure.
It's old, you know? Going to get the gavel anyhow.
Okay. And I apologize for turning my back on the Mayor Protem and the council. Okay, this auction is for the sale of a residential property at thirteen thirty-eight North Jackson Street, Glendale. Portions of the residence and detached garage have sustained landslide damage due to the severe rainstorms of winter 2004, 2005. Therefore, the sale will be on an as-is, where-is basis. The successful bidder will assume the risk of the quality and condition of the property. Details of the sale: The city makes no representations, express, or imply that the property will be or can be developed. At such time as a purchaser seeks to improve or demolish any improvements on the property, said purchaser shall be required to meet all city codes and other applicable laws and requirements in effect at that time. This is a cash payment sale. The successful bidder must pay the full amount of the sale price within five business days after the date of the public auction, August 31, 2010. Otherwise, the successful bidder's deposit will be forfeited. However, for good cause, the council may extend this time limitation. A bidder must state if his or her bid is subject to a real estate broker or salesperson's commission. This public auction is being conducted with understanding that the city reserve the right to reject any and all bids for any reason whatsoever. Okay? We will now begin the bidding. The initial bid amount is set at two-hundred thousand dollars, and we have six qualified bidders who have submitted deposits to bid at that amount. You have been given paddles. We ask, in order to make a bid, for you to raise your paddle with your number clearly And I will ask my staff to also be my second pair of eyes in the audience, in case I miss someone. We will start, the bidding has already started at two-hundred thousand dollars. You have all qualified by submitting your checks. Do I hear a bid for two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Number one, for two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a bid at two-hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Number four for two-hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Is there a bid for two-hundred and seventy? Number five? Is there a bid for two-eighty? Number one, three-twenty. Is there three-thirty? Number four, three-thirty? Number one, three-forty. Do we hear three-fifty? Number four at three-fifty. Number one at three-sixty. Number four at three-seventy. Three-eighty? Number one at three-eighty. Number four at three-ninety. Number one at four-hundred. Four-ten? Four-hundred, bidding is now at four-hundred and ten thousand dollars for number four. Four-twenty? I'm getting gestures to end it. Is there a four-fifteen? Four-fifteen? Number two. Four-twenty? For four at four-twenty. Number two at four-twenty-five. Four-thirty? Number four at four-thirty. Four-hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The bid currently is at four-hundred and thirty thousand. Going once. Is there a bid for four-thirty-two? Number two at four-thirty-two. That's number two. Is there? I'm sorry, for the commission? That's the initial one. That's the first one. Increments of one percent. Yeah, and that was two thousand dollars. Four-thirty-four? Number four at four-thirty-four. Four-thirty-six? Okay. Bid is at four-thirty-four? Four-hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Going once. Going twice. It's only going to go one more time? Am I allowed to say whether it's with a? Yeah, there are no broker fees in the final, in the last three bidders, none of them had broker fees. So it's without broker fees. It's currently at four-hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. After this, we'll be bringing in a nice classic car for auction. Trying to inject levity. Going once, going twice. Four-hundred and thirty-six. Four-thirty-six to number two, four-thirty-eight. Do I hear four-thirty-eight from number four? We have four-hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Do I have four-hundred and forty thousand dollars? Four-forty? Four-hundred and forty thousand dollars. Going once. Well, it's actually four-hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars going once. Going twice. We have for four-forty. Four-forty, number one. Do we have four-forty-two? We have four-forty-two in the back with number four. Do I have four-forty-four? Four-hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Four-hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Otherwise, we have four-hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to number four, going once. Do we have four-hundred and forty-four? Number two, four-hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Do we have four-forty-six? Four-forty-six in the back. Four-forty-six in the back. Do I have four-forty-eight? Four-forty-eight. Going once. We have four-forty-eight. We have, I'm sorry, that was number two, right? We have number two for four-hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We have number two for four-hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Do we have four-hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Four-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Going once. We do have four, number four, for four-fifty. We have four-fifty-two. Four-fifty-two. The current bid is for four-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do we have four-hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars? Four-hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Number four has bid four-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Going once. Going twice. We do have four-hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, number two in the front. Number two in the front, we have four-fifty-two, four-fifty-four. Four-fifty-four in the back, number four, four-fifty-four. Do we have four-fifty-six? Four-fifty-six. We have four-fifty-six in the front, number two. Do I have four-fifty-eight? Do I have four-fifty-eight? Four-hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Current bid is for four-fifty-six, number two in the front, four-fifty-six. Going once. Going twice. I have four-fifty-eight in the back. Four-fifty-eight, number four, in the back, four-fifty-eight. Do I have four-sixty? Four-hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The current bid is four-hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I have four-sixty in the front with number two, four-sixty. Do I have four-sixty-two? Four-sixty-two. Current bid is four-sixty, number two in the front. Do I have four-sixty-two? Going once. Going twice. I have four-sixty-two. Number four in the back, four-sixty-two. Do I have four-sixty-four? Four-sixty-four. Current bid is number four at four-hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Do I have four-sixty-four? Going once. Going twice. We have four-sixty-four, number two in the front. Four-sixty-four. Do I have $466? Do I have $466? Current bid is $464, number two in the front. $466. It's going once at $464. Going twice. Sold.
Number two.
Number two. Sold to number two. For $464,000.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Sako Arutunyan, for that demonstration for the public. That's... Thank you. That's how we put our budget together here at the city.
Artie. Artie.
We'll need the name of the successful bidder to include in the motion. The sum is $464,000.
God. Wrote down all... Once it went through.
Amazing.
The council can consider the motion as soon as we get the name.
That wasn't in the job description, by the way.
You did very well, however.
Uh, thank you.
Very convincing. Okay.
The name of the successful bidder.
Do we have the name of the...
Sako Arutunyan.
Okay, one second.
The successful...
Folks, still have business here in the council chambers.
The successful bid... Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, concluding the transaction with the city attorney, who has now moved outside of the chambers, I believe. Are we gonna conclude this transaction now, or fill out the necessary paperwork?
Mr. City Attorney, could you clarify?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We need the county... City Council now to conclude the sale by authorizing the city to... A city attorney to open up an escrow and essentially authorize the sale of the property to the successful bidder, and that's why we need the successful bidder's name to include the motion.
And the successful bidder's name is Mr. Sako Arutunyan. There was no broker fee indicated, no broker representing the bidder. It's... First name is S-A-K-O. Last name is Arutunyan, A-R-U-T-Y-U-N-Y-A-N.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move 8A1 with...
Sako Arutunyan in the sum of $464,000.
Second one.
We have a second. All right. Mr. Sakoian, please.
Council members. Friedman?
Yes.
Fentero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian? Mayor Pro Tem, Draymond?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Sakoian, our next item, please.
We now move to the five-minute portion of oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a series of cards, all from the same street. Are you separate speakers, or are you coming as a group, or you're separate speakers?
Oh, can't...
Dave, please. Okay. I just wanna know if you plan to speak individually, if you wanna speak together. Okay. Thank you. All right, then our first speaker is Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Kevin Berry.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm a new Glendale resident, and I have to say I'm very appreciative...
Could you say your name, please?
I'm sorry, Jennifer Pinkerton of Truitt Street in Glendale. As a new Glendale resident, I have to say I'm very appreciative of the many ordinances and programs that the city offers to maintain our quality of life here and enhance our quality of life. But I'm here to address an issue that affects me and my neighbors specifically, and that has to do with what seems to be a lack of ordinances designed to protect our quality of life during construction. I believe that any firm that can undertake a construction or development project of any size should be mandated to undertake mitigation measures to offset the negative impacts of the construction, whether it be a gas station, a studio, a shopping center, et cetera. Reasonable mitigation measures for residents in the immediate vicinity are something that the city, I believe, needs to seriously consider. Since December, about two dozen residents and a dozen homes located just 30 feet from the Disney Center... The Disney Childcare Center project have been exposed to and damaged by dust, dirt, relentless sound noise, earthquake-like compactions that extended for seven days. Large vehicles and pieces of construction equipment travel up and down our street dozens of times a day, even though they're not supposed to, according to the plan. Construction crew members continue to park on our streets, even though they are not supposed to, according to the plan. Collectively, we have spent hours calling and emailing the city, Whiting Turner, the general contractor in Disney, to no avail. These problems continue. I don't think we should have to undertake steps like that. I'd like to know where the city inspectors have been and why Disney is not better monitoring its subcontractors. I understand that development is a very necessary... Plays a very necessary role in economic life of any city. We are not anti-development. We, however, believe that mitigation measures need to be incorporated into construction projects, and they have not been. Our homes are our single biggest investment. We do not live in an affluent neighborhood. We're not politically connected. But we are suffering the impacts from a project that the city approved that did not include adequate protective measures. Council member Weaver, I'd like to respond to your comment about LADWP. I happen to work there. Lord knows, we have our problems, but we provide cleaning services for homes adjacent to areas that we grade. We install dual-pane windows in dozens of homes located almost 700 feet from one of our multi-year construction projects. Our homes are located 30 feet away. No one has offered us anything equivalent. I'd like to point out that a couple weeks ago, I took dirt out of my front planter, and dust drifted onto my neighbor's car. I offered to pay for a car wash because that was the right and neighborly thing to do. If I play my music too loud, my neighbors can call the police department because I'm disturbing the peace. All these things have an impact on our daily lives. It would be very neighborly of Disney and the city to offer us a menu of mitigation measures, similar to those I've mentioned: cleaning service, dual-pane windows, additional landscaping to shield us from dust, a paid parking permit zone. Just last Saturday, Disney employees attending a function used up all the available street parking on our street. The childcare center is not even open yet. What's going to happen when it opens? Traffic over there is very dangerous. Paula and Davis avenues have sometimes simultaneously been partially or completely blocked, with equipment, gates that are open, piles of sand, dumpsters, et cetera. Had there been an emergency, police and fire vehicles would have had a very difficult time gaining access to our neighborhood. Again, we have reported this repeatedly. No steps have been taken. We even submitted a letter to the council in July, and I frankly was a little disappointed that we didn't receive a response from you. Perhaps our concerns seem trivial or insignificant. If that's the case, I invite you to come spend a few hours on our street and feel what it's like when your house vibrates, your windows rattle, there's constant dust, and there is incessant noise and beeping. I hope that... I think that would give you a better understanding of what we've been subject to. We're not asking for millions of dollars. We're asking for a reasonable measure of mitigation measures, and I hope that the city will seriously consider requiring measures of that sort for future construction projects. I'd like to submit this petition to the city. Also attached are some articles, one on the negative health impacts associated with exposure to loud noise and other mitigations that Disney undertook at Disneyland several years ago. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Pinkerton. Our next speaker is Kevin Berry, followed by Leonel Morales.
Pro Tem, Draymond, council. I'm also a resident of Truitt Street, and I just wanna give you guys an idea of what we're living with. This construction's been going on for almost 11 months... No, excuse me. Eight months. Eight months now. And we've been very patient with what we've been put up with. For us to come here today is we're asking you guys to really do oversight, to help us just make sure they manage what we're... Inspect what we are... That's hurting our quality of life. Just on my street alone, you can't park because parking's taken up. There's also front loaders going back and forth in front of our house, and all these issues are happening on a daily basis, and they've been happening for months now. And I'm just... I'm usually... I've been a resident of Glendale 15 years. Whenever some kind of construction's going on, there's usually some kind of liaison between the construction and the residents to make sure that, you know, our quality of life is being protected. That's what we're asking the... The neighborhood is asking the council to do, is protect our quality of life. Even though Disney is a huge company, I hope that won't distract you guys from taking care of us and making sure that our quality of life is protected. A lot of us are longtime residents and people who've just moved here. I mean, we don't wanna leave our homes, but they're being damaged, and we really feel that we're not getting the help that we need. And that's why we come before the council, is to ask you guys to come. Come by our street and look and see all the cars parked there. Look at all the garbage. Look at the streets blocked off. Look at front loaders going back and forth, a residential street. I mean, we have children in the area. It's a danger. And I mean, there's been no oversight. We haven't heard from the development agency. We've sent letters, emails, and that's why we're coming before you guys today, is because we want some action. We want you guys to really take care of us. We're citizens of Glendale, and we really think that you guys should really take care of us and make sure our quality of life. The reason we live in Glendale is because it's a great place to live. And if we were violating a ton of ordinances, I'm sure that the redevelopment agency would come and instruct us on what to do. So we're asking you to do the same thing for our neighborhood. I don't know if you've ever been near our neighborhood. It's near DreamWorks, beautiful neighborhood. You can hear a pin drop. But in the last eight months, it's like you could hear like an atomic bomb drop. That's how it's been. So really, what I want to like really get across to you guys is, you can't ignore us because we're a small, little neighborhood, and it's Disney, and they're a huge corporation. We're not anti-business. We don't... I love Disney. We have, you know, 24-hour security going by. I mean, it's fantastic. But as a neighbor right now, they're just running roughshod over us as residents. And that's why I... We came before the council to, you know, to give our views and ask you guys to really come forward, come see what's happening in our neighborhood. Don't let us, you know, like read about it in the newspaper. I want you guys to like make sure you protect that quality of life. That's what makes Glendale great. In other, you know, cities where you call someone, the police come within five minutes. But in this case, I think we've been let down. They haven't come to our defense. They haven't come to help us. So that's why we're here today. So I thank you for your time. So please, don't ignore us. Please come to our neighborhood, and please, you know, rectify these things that are happening, and help us with future construction, because this is not the end of the construction in our area. There's other projects that have already been approved, and we need to make sure that the same things don't happen over and over again. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Okay, Mr. Berry. Thank you. I assure you, we're not ignoring you. And by the way, just if you're unfamiliar with speaking at council during oral communications, council will respond to you at the conclusion of everybody having their opportunity to speak. So, okay. Leonel Morales, followed by Michael Morales.
We live in the same... So we're welcome. Basically, the same thing our neighbors have been, you know, talking about. We are here to, you know, the request that the city of Glendale have more oversight on the construction site that's being held at 1,300 block of Flower Street. We feel that the ordinances are not compliant, or some... Or seem that offer no protection to our neighborhood. Like our neighbor said, you know, there's 18 wheelers driving, you know, in front of our street, you know, back and forth where there's clearly signs posted, you know, no vehicles over two tons. Big dumpsters on each side, on Davis and on Paula Street, blocking our street. We can't get through. Dust is everywhere. I have a five-month pregnant wife. We can't really take out walks anymore. It's just too dusty out there for her to, you know, enjoy a walkout at night or during the day, or whatever it may be. We just feel that it's been a real nuisance, you know, to withstand like, you know, shaking, and then our house, you know, having cracks all over the place due to the severity of the rattling. And we just feel that the city... We would appreciate if the city take more notice into what's going on there and, you know, help our quality of life to be a little better. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, and...
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Hammond, followed by Bill Weisman, followed by Nancy Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, city staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Personally, I'm appalled. I know that there is a homeowners group in that area, and Joanne Hedge is... And they're part of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating. And I certainly feel that for homeowners, it's dreadful to have to live under those conditions. There's just no way that that should be allowed. I mean, after all, many of them I know have been in that area for... Well, I know Joanne Hedge is for at least 20, 30 years. And why they're putting up with that, I do not know till now. I don't know why it hasn't been brought forward. After all, we're entitled to enjoy our homes and our quality of life, and that certainly is not... Doesn't sound to me like enjoying it. There are a lot of things going on in the city. There are many good things, many things that need attention. I'm not saying bad. I'm just saying that need attention. For instance, I know on the street where I live, and I've talked about it before, and have tried to get some action, the cars, just absolutely a speedway up over the top of Cypress. They come up from along Los Feliz and up Glendale and take a shortcut on Cypress. They go up the hill like demons and go down the other side even faster. So... And I've tried to get something done, and I know that they keep saying it's up to the neighbors and this and that, and that's what it'll come down to, just as this situation. And I do think it's too bad that citizens are reluctant to come forward to complain. I don't know why, except that a lot of people don't wish to come forward. They feel that they're kind of on the, I don't know, where you say shy side, or whatever. We have so few people anymore at oral communication, other than the regulars, which I have been called in the past and will continue to be called for as long as I can get up here. I will be up here and have a say about what happens in my city. And what happens is, for instance, last night I was at a restaurant, and where I go on Monday evenings. I parked. There was no parking available, and there was an area that wasn't marked "no parking", and I parked in that parking lot. Now, this is in a restaurant parking lot, not on the street. And I had a man mark up to me as I got out of my car and say to me, "Is that a parking place?" And I said, "No, but I'm parking there. It's available." And he said... I said, "Why? What's it to you?" And he said, "Well, it's..." I said, "What business is it to you?" And he said, "It is my business." And then he started to rail on me about that he sees me at city council and that I'm up here talking and that I'm illegally parking. Well, I was not illegally parking. Number one, I do have a handicap, and I don't always take the handicap. If there's another space available, I leave it open. But this man went on to tell me that I had no right to be parking there, and that he was gonna call the police on me. And of course, immediately I turned and said, "Hey, do that. Good idea, and I'll stay right here." Because he was like, "I'm gonna, you know, you're gonna hear from me and this and that and the other." I couldn't believe it, because I come here on Tuesday night. He felt he had a right to attack me for parking in a private... A restaurant parking lot. It's just... He went on about it, and I just finally just walked away. Just can't be bothered. But again, I'm saying, I've been threatened. I've been on the phone. I've had property damage, eggs tossed at my house, my car graffiti'd. But you know what? Nothing is gonna stop me. And anybody out there that feels that they're going to stop me is not. And I feel the people out there should be up here speaking, and if they have something to say, they don't need to attack me personally when I'm alone like a coward and there was nobody else around. And unfortunately, I had forgot to charge my phone. So I was kind of vulnerable, because it was in an out-of-the-way spot where I was parked. But again, I'm saying, why do people condemn other people for getting up and speaking up for their rights? for their rights? We have a right to do that, and I don't feel that I say things that are out of line, and that all I'm doing is standing up for my rights. And in their case, I'll stand up for their rights too. Believe me, there will be more going on about the, this, whatever we can do to help these people for their quality of life. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. All right, Bill Weissman, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weissman. As always, Margaret is a hard act to follow, and I'm here with some, just an announcement that I wanted to make. I would have made it during the earlier oral communications period, but I was running a little late today. As some of you may know, I'm kind of an enthusiastic amateur photographer, and I recently got my first chance to have my first exhibition of photographs, and it's going to be at the La Crescent branch of the Los Angeles County Public Library. And it's basically an exhibition of pictures of Dugmagedon Park before, during, and after the station fire. Because of the fact that I live very close to the park, and I'm up there very often with my camera, and I can also see it pretty well from the roof of my house, and in addition to that, was able to get access to the park thanks to the Glendale Community Services and Parks Staff during some times that it was not open to the public, in order to document the effects of the station fire. And I've got 75 photos, 25 from before, 25 from during, and 25 after the station fire, showing how the park looked, what it looked like when the fire was actually there, and the resulting damage, and following the damage, the incredible, amazing regrowth that has happened in that park. There are many places you can go where you could look around and you would not even know that there had been a fire. And there's going to be a reception August 26 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's co-sponsored by the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley and the Friends of the Library. And it would be remiss if I didn't thank a few people, because it would have been really hard for me to do this alone, you know, starting with the academy, I guess, but most of all, I really want to thank the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks Staff, in particular, George Chapchan, John Pearson, Dave Ahern, Mark Sturdeman, Russ Houck, Eric Grossman, Jeff Weinstein, and Dave Marino, who all helped out in one way or another with the production of this photo exhibition. And it would be completely remiss of me also not to mention Mr. Bob McFaul, a retired city manager, who gave me a great deal of advice and encouragement in terms of improving my photography. And last but not least, my wife, for her patience and good humor in putting up with me for not doing any of my household chores while I was working on pictures instead. Thanks very much. The exhibit will be up and available for viewing until September 20th, if you're not able to come by Thursday. And again, that's the Lacrosse Center Library, 2809 Foothill Boulevard in Lacrosse Center, it's the corner of Foothill and Lacrosse Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weissman. And our last speaker is Nancy Kent.
My name's Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I have three items. First is, I would like to thank the council for the comments that you made at two recent city council meetings, when the Glendale firefighters and the Glendale Management Association agreed to take cuts in compensation, cuts from what had previously been agreed to in their contracts. I really regret that there were two or three members of the public who spoke during those agenda items, and they chose to criticize these city employees, criticize them during an agenda item where the employees were agreeing to take a cut in their compensation. The mayor and all four council members disagreed with these members of the public, and I didn't speak at those meetings, but I felt that I was very well represented by all of the council, especially by the choice of words of council members, Quintero, Friedman, Draymond, and Mayor Najarian. I think the comments of all five on the council represented the position of the majority of the voters of Glendale. We appreciate what those employees did. Next point, it's disgusting that some of these same members of the public repeatedly imply that Glendale is like the city of Bell, and thank you again for calling them on that also. My last point is that since Glendale does not have separate council districts, what some might call fiefdoms, I also want to say I'm very glad that all members of the council represent me, and you would like my vote, and you would like me to recommend to other people to vote for you. And I'm very glad that we do not have separate council districts. So right now, all five of you are working for what's best for the whole city and not just working for what's best for a district in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kent. All right, that is my last card for oral communications, so I'll close oral communications, and before, it's a sea of hands going up on a bunch of different issues, I'm sure, but before we go too much further than our neighbors that have spoken here, let me turn to the city manager.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I might just touch quickly on the matter of the Disney facility and the complaints you've heard here from several residents. I think it was in earlier August when I received a copy of the concerns and petition. I did personally drive the neighborhood, in fact, I made a point of being over there kind of between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so I had a good sense of the number of workers there and kind of the congestion that ensues at the end of their day, which is about that time. I had to agree with the concerns about the noise and the congestion, having seen it there, and there really is very little distance between the school and what is relatively small neighborhood street that buffers the homes and the school. I did contact Ed Hookla, who's the senior vice president for development for Disney, passed on the concerns to him and asked him to follow up, also touched with our inspection staff and asked them to be sure and address the issues that were raised. It does seem to me, though, with the continuing concerns that are being expressed, it's time for a neighborhood meeting with some Disney reps and our people to go out and hold a neighborhood meeting and listen to the residents and see what we might be able to do to try and help address the issues. So that's what, unless you have some other thoughts and ideas, that's what I'd be doing tomorrow to follow up.
Mr. City Manager, I know I would appreciate that, I see heads nodding, and I know everyone wants to speak. I just want to say, the only, the only area I disagree with you is a comment that, that it's perception that it's now time to do that. I think the time to do that has been here for a while. And to answer one of the, I think, Mr. Berry, your comment, it was not the intention, I don't think, of this council to ignore you, certainly wasn't my intention, and we did get your emails, we were copied on your emails, and the assumption is that, that things are progressing because you're in communication with staff, and we see emails going back and forth, and in fact, the staff was in contact with Disney over it, but you're not getting the resolution you need. And so, we hear you, and I would absolutely endorse our city, city staff getting with you right away, getting with Disney right away, and let's get some mitigation to this. You're right, I don't live there, but, and I can't imagine what you're going through. So, let me now turn to the hands, as I saw them go up in the order, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I've been driving around the neighborhood for months now, and it's been a mess, and I don't know if it's because of the compaction of the earth that had to take place, whatever it is, boy, that's a strange, that's a strange work site. And I went there Friday, I go to the Home Depot down the block, and so I, and actually on Friday, I was following a sweeper that wasn't a city sweeper, it must have been a private, must have been a private sweeper. My truck was covered with dust, and he had to make, he's going to have to make two or three, or maybe three or four laps, because behind him, it was just totally dusty. I've been interested in that compact earth, you know, walls that they've been putting together, so I don't know what it is, but that's really, I agree with the neighbors, they've taken it on the chin, so we sure have to work with Disney to see what we can do to mitigate this, because they've been through hell, and I think, you know, we're going to have to come up with something. I mean, it's just not, not appropriate what's taking place there.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the neighbors, I'm sorry that you felt the need to have to come in. I did get your email, and I want to just personally apologize, because I forwarded it on to Disney, to city manager, and just assumed that, you know, I didn't get another email because everyone was happy. And clearly, that's not what happened. But I don't want you to think for a second that your issue is, as one of you had said, trivial and insignificant, because, believe me, this is what we're here for. You know, we don't get to deal with immigration, and we don't get to deal with, you know, those big issues like they do in Washington. We're here because we want to deal with your quality of life, and so this is very important for us to hear, and, believe me, we hear you loud and clear. And we will not only put together that meeting, but make sure that whatever mitigation needs to be done is done, because on every site in the city, there is supposed to be, as you know, mitigation for dust, mitigation for noise, ground rules. If, I'm very concerned to hear that their original development agreement was to not have parking and not to have trucks on your street and that they're there, that is something that should be handled immediately. So, we'll get into this right away, and hopefully you won't feel the need to come back, although if you do, it'll be nice to see you. And I want you to know also that your neighborhood is not at all off the radar. In fact, I first came to Glendale because I was looking for a house in your neighborhood, and that's how I found my way here. So, I know it well, as I'm sure we all do, and it's a great neighborhood, and hopefully it'll stay that way. And I also hope that when this project's finished, that, you know, it'll be a nice addition to your neighborhood and not a detrimental one. But given that Disney is going to be doing more construction, you know, more in their campus, I want to be sure that this gets dealt with now, so. Thanks, and we will be, I'm sure, speaking with you again.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I was on site for construction, I guess, two or three months ago. At that time, it was quiet, didn't see anything out of the ordinary. I'm an engineer, I've been in project management, so nothing struck me as being out of the ordinary. Reason I was there is because this is a totally unique construction. Walls are, I think, 18 inches thick, supposed to be a green building totally, and I don't know if some of those activities of what they're doing are reflected in the noise you're getting now. I don't know. I didn't see where there's that much area that was going to have to have fill put in and compacted, which would be the sheep's foot, I didn't see that. Following that, I didn't see anything until I got your email, like the others. And I have friends at Disney, and I called them, and they knew about it, and I had every expectation they were taking care of it. I approved the Disney project many moons ago, and they have a development agreement, and I'm pretty certain they have environmental documents that control what they should be doing. And when they did the Phase One project on Flower, the corner there, I never heard a word of any problems at all. Of course, it's away from the residential, there was nothing. And now we've approved the Phase Two, which will be on the campus, again, away from you. I think this is the only piece that is next to residential, and I don't know why they haven't followed up to take care of it. You show up tonight, you blindside all of us, because we thought it was being taken care of either by staff or by Disney. So, you know we're going to be on this tomorrow.
Okay. Were there any, any other issues on...
Oh, that's staff do their job.
Not just on this, but...
Well, to congratulate Mr. Weissman on his exhibit, and I hope, I know that I will be going to see it, and I hope everybody else does as well.
The only other comment I have is to Margaret. Margaret, if that happened to you, I'm sorry that happened to you, and you and I, over the years, have, long before coming to council, my coming to council, have agreed and disagreed on all kinds of issues, we've done that professionally, and don't ever let anybody tell you you shouldn't be here to speak, or anybody else. You have every right to speak, and we need to continue to hear from you and other members of our community. You speak for a number of people who don't have the time, or work other shifts, or can't come here, or have children that, you know, they can't leave to come here, so we appreciate that, Margaret. Mr. Quintero.
On the other hand, don't confront angry strangers in dark parking lots, Margaret. Get their, get their phone number and call them later.
Get their phone number and call Mr. Quintero directly. Okay.
I should have said my person, that would be...
Okay. All right. I understand we have some new business?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council, that the council duly authorizes the city attorney's office to initiate legal action. Defendants and other particulars may be disclosed upon inquiry unless to do so will impact the ability to effectuate service of process.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Kusakian.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian, Mayor Pro Tem, and Draymond.
Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We adjourn.
We have a second, oh, no.